Three. County Clerk Mike, testing one, two, three. County Clerk, check, check, one, two, three. Attorney Mike, testing one, two, three. Attorney Mike, check, one, two, three. Meitzner Mike, testing one, two, three. Meitzner Mike, check, one, two, three. Dennis, oh wow. Dennis Mike, check, one, two, three. Dennis Mike, one, two, three. Beatty, oops. Beatty Mike, check, one, two, three. Beatty Mike, test, one, two, three. Lopez Mike, testing one, two, three. Lopez Mike, check, one, two, three. Howell Mike, check, one, two, three. Howell Mike, testing one, two, three.
I can send Justin to the toilet. Yes, sir, I'll send him in one.
All right. Hopefully you guys can hear me. We're going to be starting in about a minute and a half. All right. Hopefully you guys can hear me. We're going to be starting in about a minute and a half.
Is a normal reaction.
Well, good morning. Welcome. Glad you're here today, those joining us online, those joining us on our television partner, KPTS, and here in person. Welcome. We're glad you're joining us this morning. When you walked in, you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet. If you're following at home, you can also get those at sedgecitycounty.org. You can also get all supporting backup material on that same link as well. So, got a relatively busy day, a lot of appointments and some good things to discuss. So, why don't we get to work? Madam Clerk?
Invocation to be led by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Hello, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This is Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Want to do a quick reminder that Sedgwick County is currently under the state of Kansas imposed burn ban during April. This means that most open burning is not allowed, including trash fires, brush piles, structures, or other materials on any premises. Only prescribed burns with a permit are allowed, and you can still use your barbecue grill, smoker, and backyard fire pit. Open burns can resume after May 1st, 2024. For questions regarding the burn ban or fire safety in general, please call the Sedgwick County Fire Marshal at 316-660-3473. Each April is recognized as National Stress Awareness Month. Calcare put together a short video to explain the signs and symptoms of stress and ways to get help. After the video, Joan Tammany, the Executive Director of Calcare, and Michelle Calvert, Director of Quality and the CCBHC, will share some additional information.
Normal reaction to stressful events. Feeling some anxiety can actually help us to prepare for important things like giving presentations, taking a test, or planning for important life events. Anxiety helps us recognize danger and prepares us to react when we are in an unsafe situation. When anxiety becomes overwhelming, however, it can cause us to freeze, not be able to think clearly, and can interfere with even the simplest of daily activities like leaving your house to run an errand. Symptoms of anxiety include unexplained worry or feeling uneasy, and can also include physical symptoms like stomach aches, shortness of breath, and feeling nauseous. If left untreated, these symptoms can grow into panic, which can be seen as difficulty breathing, racing heartbeat, and sweaty or shaky palms. Knowing the signs of an anxiety disorder is the first step towards recovery. It is important to know that anxiety can be treated and help is available. Talk therapy is often used for treatment and may also include taking medication to help manage symptoms. If you or someone you know is experiencing anxiety, call Calcare at 316-660-9600. Your primary care doctor, another mental health provider, or for immediate help, call 988.
And we will start with Joan.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Joan Tammany, Executive Director at Calcare. I wanted to talk about that video. That is Raven Holmes. She is one of our providers on our assertive community treatment team, otherwise known as ACT. All of these videos highlight staff at Calcare or leaders at Calcare. There is a series of these videos. We were able and fortunate to be able to make these with consent from communications through a grant we received from KU School of Medicine, Facts Not Fear, which is aimed at promoting education and awareness around mental health and substance use disorders for adult males who may not traditionally seek services, so those from more marginalized communities. So, we have the series is done in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese, but we thought for today we would show the English version. So, it was a real honor because they, the grant they provided us allowed us to work with a videographer out of Kansas City and produce quality work without taking time away from our internal communications team. So, Stress Awareness Month always gives us opportunity to promote mental well-being. Each of you, I did hear that stress balls would be welcome for Stress Awareness Month, so each of you has those, and Chairman asked me to toss him one. That was close. Bad pitch. It was a bad pitch, but he asked me to do it. But anyway, I'm going to bring Michelle Calvert up. She's our Director of Quality Risk Management and also leads some of our CCBHC efforts, and she was a lead in this project, and appreciate her efforts, and she's going to talk about some stress management.
Thank you, Joan. You've got a great arm, Joan.
I'm sorry.
Michelle, good morning.
Who knew she was a lefty?
Yeah.
Good morning. I want to talk a little bit about stress management, the way that it impacts our body, and then also some ways that you can deal with stress. So, when we think of stress, it's something that we all deal with. Ninety percent of the population has overwhelming stress at work at some point in their life, and I think you can probably relate to that. I think a lot of the people who are listening can probably relate to that as well. So, what does stress do to us? When we think of it, we think of stress from a mental health perspective, and it can cloud our thinking, it can impact the way that we are behaviorally acting towards others, and then it can impact just the way that we're engaging with others or also in our work. Stress also has physical symptoms. So, physical symptoms of stress can result in high cortisol levels, which can impact our body's inflammation. It can impact our thought process. It can impact our way of dealing with illness as well. So, when we are highly stressed or chronically stressed, we're sick more, we're not coming to work as often, we're not engaging with our family as significantly or as lovingly, maybe. So, what are some things that we can do to manage stress? So, some things that we can do, humor. We saw that a little bit. When we're laughing, it reduces a lot of things. It reduces the stress in our bodies. We can eat nutritiously, fill our body with liquid, so be drinking a lot of water, be more active physically. And then also things that we can do are practice mindfulness. So, be more present in the moment, and be present in the moment by noticing things around you, listening, seeing, observing, and then at the end of the night, having a good nighttime routine. So, doing things that help us sleep better so that we can be more energized in the morning. You all have stress balls. You all have things in front of you. Use them, give them away, make sure others have things that are helpful for them as well. Thank you, guys.
Not very good. We appreciate that, and we appreciate the conversation around this. There's, everyone experiences a certain amount of stress. Stress can get to a point where it's incredibly unhealthy and unproductive, and just talking about this issue reduces the stigma so everybody knows there are ways to deal with unhealthy stress, and this is helpful, and we're happy with that you guys are here this morning to share on Stress Awareness Month.
Thank you so much. And one more thing I would add is that if stress is overwhelming, reach out to somebody, make sure you're getting help, and always remember that 988 is available and Calcare is here 24 hours a day.
Very good. We appreciate all that you guys do at Calcare. Thank you.
Calcare also brought extra stress balls for anybody in the audience that may need one. If you'd like one, they're back at the entrance, so just, there's plenty to go around. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Yeah. Any questions for Nicole? Very good, as always. We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Okay. We had three individuals sign up for public comment. Mr. Mayor, Craig, you guys want to talk about an item on new business, item J. Would you like to wait and talk? I think we'll give you that opportunity to just speak at that moment, item J of new business. And then the remainder is Andrew Crane with guiding pause.
Good morning. Good morning. I got, I wanted to know what an update on the connecting Sedgwick County transportation with Wichita Transit. you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet. If you're following at home, you can also get those at sedgwickcounty.org. You can also get all supporting backup material on that same link as well. So got a relatively busy day, a lot of appointments, and some good things to discuss. So why don't we get to work? Madam Clerk?
invocation to be led by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Hello, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This is Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Want to do a quick reminder that Sedgwick County is currently under the state of Kansas imposed burn ban during April. This means that most open burning is not allowed, including trash fires, brush piles, structures, or other materials on any premises. Only prescribed burns with a permit are allowed, and you can still use your barbecue grill, smoker, and backyard fire pit. Open burns can resume after May 1st, 2024. For questions regarding the burn ban or fire safety in general, please call the Sedgwick County Fire Marshal at 316-660-3473. Each April is recognized as National Stress Awareness Month. Calm Care put together a short video to explain the signs and symptoms of stress and ways to get help. After the video, Joan Tammany, the Executive Director of Calm Care, and Michelle Calvert, Director of Quality and the CCBHC, will share some additional information.
Normal reaction to stressful events. Feeling some anxiety can actually help us to prepare for important things like giving presentations, taking a test, or planning for important life events. Anxiety helps us recognize danger and prepares us to react when we are in an unsafe situation. When anxiety becomes overwhelming, however, it can cause us to freeze, not be able to think clearly, and can interfere with even the simplest of daily activities, like leaving your house to run an errand. Symptoms of anxiety include unexplained worry or feeling uneasy, and can also include physical symptoms like stomach aches, shortness of breath, and feeling nauseous. If left untreated, these symptoms can grow into panic, which can be seen as difficulty breathing, racing heartbeat, and sweaty or shaky palms. Knowing the signs of an anxiety disorder is the first step towards recovery. It is important to know that anxiety can be treated and help is available. Talk therapy is often used for treatment and may also include taking medication to help manage symptoms. If you or someone you know is experiencing anxiety, call Calm Care at 316-660-9600, your primary care doctor, another mental health provider, or for immediate help, call 988.
And we will start with Joan.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Joan Tammany, Executive Director at Calm Care. I wanted to talk about that video. That is Raven Holmes. She is one of our providers on our assertive community treatment team, otherwise known as ACT. All of these videos highlight staff at Calm Care or leaders at Calm Care. There is a series of these videos. We were able and fortunate to be able to make these with consent from communications through a grant we received from KU School of Medicine, Facts Not Fear, which is aimed at promoting education and awareness around mental health and substance use disorders for adult males who may not traditionally seek services, so those from more marginalized communities. So we have the series is done in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese, but we thought for today we would show the English version. So it was a real honor because they, the grant they provided us allowed us to work with a videographer out of Kansas City and produce quality work without taking time away from our internal communications team. So Stress Awareness Month always gives us opportunity to promote mental well-being. Each of you, I did hear that stress balls would be welcome for Stress Awareness Month, so each of you has those. And Chairman asked me to toss him one. That was close. Bad pitch. It was a bad pitch, but he asked me to do it. But anyway, I'm going to bring Michelle Calvert up. She's our Director of Quality Risk Management and also leads some of our CCBHC efforts. And she was a lead in this project and appreciate her efforts, and she's going to talk about some stress management.
Thank you, Joan. You've got a great arm, Joan.
I'm sorry.
Michelle, good morning.
Who knew she was a lefty?
Yeah.
Good morning. I want to talk a little bit about stress management, the way that it impacts our body, and then also some ways that you can deal with stress. So when we think of stress, it's something that we all deal with. Ninety percent of the population has overwhelming stress at work at some point in their life, and I think you can probably relate to that. I think a lot of the people who are listening can probably relate to that as well. So what does stress do to us? When we think of it, we think of stress from a mental health perspective, and it can cloud our thinking, it can impact the way that we are behaviorally acting towards others, and then it can impact just the way that we're engaging with others or also in our work. Stress also has physical symptoms. So physical symptoms of stress can result in high cortisol levels, which can impact our body's inflammation. It can impact our thought process. It can impact our way of dealing with illness as well. So when we are highly stressed or chronically stressed, we're sick more, we're not coming to work as often, we're not engaging with our family as significantly or as lovingly maybe. So what are some things that we can do to manage stress? So some things that we can do, humor. We saw that a little bit. When we're laughing, it reduces a lot of things. It reduces the stress in our bodies. We can eat nutritiously, fill our body with liquid, so be drinking a lot of water, be more active physically. And then also things that we can do are practice mindfulness. So be more present in the moment, and be present in the moment by noticing things around you, listening, seeing, observing, and then at the end of the night, having a good nighttime routine. So doing things that help us sleep better so that we can be more energized in the morning. You all have stress balls. You all have things in front of you. Use them, give them away, make sure others have things that are helpful for them as well. So thank you, guys.
Very good. We appreciate that. And we appreciate the conversation around this. Everyone experiences a certain amount of stress. Stress can get to a point where it's incredibly unhealthy and unproductive, and just talking about this issue reduces the stigma so everybody knows there are ways to deal with unhealthy stress, and this is helpful, and we're happy with that you guys are here this morning to share on Stress Awareness Month.
Thank you so much. And one more thing I would add is that if stress is overwhelming, reach out to somebody, make sure you're getting help, and always remember that 988 is available and Calm Care is here 24 hours a day.
Very good. We appreciate all that you guys do at Calm Care. Thank you.
Calm Care also brought extra stress balls for anybody in the audience that may need one. If you'd like one, they're back at the entrance, so just, there's plenty to go around. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Nicole? Very good, as always. We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Okay, we had three individuals sign up for public comment. Mr. Mayor Craig, you guys want to talk about an item on new business, Item J. Would you like to wait and talk? I think we'll give you that opportunity to just speak at that moment, Item J of new business. And then the remainder is Andrew Crane with Guiding Paws. Good morning, Andrew.
Well, good morning, good morning. I got, I wanted to know what an update on the connecting Sedgwick County transportation with Wichita Transit. And I got an email from one of the veterans from a Mays, Goddard, Hayesville, and couple others surrounding areas of Sedgwick County that the, they had to wait two and a half hours for a bus for transportation to come into Wichita. And if we're going to have those kinds of issues, the blind and disabled community is going to have a rough time getting, connecting to transportation. And I wish we can get a metro system going here in Wichita. It needs to be done. And, you know, Commissioner Beatty, you know this is high up on my list to get done. And I would love to see the commission take a good action and say, we'll hire the other drivers for Wichita Transit and get a metro system in Wichita.
Very good, Andrew. Thank you for your comments and feedback. Hang tight. Real quick, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andrew, we actually have a study going on right now. I was briefed to WAMPO yesterday. You can watch the briefing online if you'd like to see that. But we are looking at things. But I want to admit that two and a half hours, when we only have a limited number of buses, and we charge $3 to ride those buses, is not excessive. We have a lot of people that need that service. And so we prioritize those folks. They need to call ahead a couple days ahead and schedule that. But once it's scheduled, we can pick them up, but I can't guarantee the time. So I just want you to be aware that that's where our current situation is, but there's a study going on right now. Go online, watch the briefing yesterday at WAMPO. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick follow-up on that. Yeah, Commissioner Dennis, thank you for bringing that up. There is a lot of discussion. You know, obviously, when we talk about transit, most of the conversations centers around the city of Wichita and their transit system. Transportation is important. It's important to the well-being of our citizens. It's important to the economic development and prosperity of our community. We do some transportation through our aging department. We are, as Commissioner Dennis said, doing a lot more study and getting some data as to what that looks like. And the conversation about a regional transportation program and a transit program is very much in tow right now. So I know it's a discussion, it's a need, and I know how you feel about it, and we appreciate that you're here today to share your insight and feedback. Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to receive and file public comment. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring eighth district celebration days.
Okay. I'd like to read a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, Inc. was founded in 1911 on the campus of Howard University in Washington, DC by three undergraduate students with the assistance of their faculty advisor. And whereas, from the initials of the Greek phrase meaning friendship is essential to the soul, the name Omega Sci-Fi was derived, and the phrase was selected as the motto. Manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift were adopted as cardinal principles. And whereas, in the state of Kansas, Gamma Upsilon Chapter was established on the 29th of December, 1949, and has been an intricate part of the Wichita community in providing uplift and fulfillment of the fraternity's nationally mandated programs for the past 75 years, and is hosting the 75th Annual Meeting of the District. And whereas, this organization has volunteered countless man-hours and donated thousands of dollars to multiple projects to uplift and encourage citizens of their communities to achieve higher social, economic, and intellectual statues. And whereas, Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, Inc. continues to occupy a progressive, cooperative, and constructive place in the civic and political life of the communities, nation, and world, and its members are pillars of their communities in all walks of life. They are known as home of the heavyweights. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan K. Beatty, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 11th through 14th, 2024, as eighth district celebration days, and commemorate the members of the undergraduate and graduate chapters of this district for their outstanding community service celebrated at the 75th Annual District Meeting held in Wichita, Kansas. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I'll make a motion to adopt it as well.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Lieutenant Colonel, retired Lieutenant Colonel Larry Burke, Sr., was going to be here this morning to receive the proclamation. He could not be here. So we will catch up with him tomorrow. I will actually be at the event. I think Commissioner Lopez will be at the event, maybe others will be at the event as well. We'll give a welcome address. We're excited that the fraternity members, Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, that they're here. So excited to meet with them soon. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item B, resolution appointing Josh Ford to the Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item is a resolution appointing Josh Ford to the Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Advisory Board, which was recently formed as recommended by Commissioner Lopez. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. Well, Josh, I appreciate your willingness to serve. We talked a little bit, and this is kind of your first time getting involved with local government, and so I'm very appreciative of your time and your service. Josh is actually my neighbor, so if you have any questions, if I can help in any way, just walk down the street. He found my car key that my husband dropped from our car and got ran over yesterday, so that was ours. Thank you so much for putting that in our mailbox. But again, I just appreciate you so much, and thank you for being here this morning. And so I will move that we will approve Josh Ford to the Emergency Communications Advisory Board.
Second. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And Kelly Arnold, County Clerk, is here to swear Josh in.
Morning, Commissioners. All right. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board to help me guide.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you'd like to say anything.
Very good. Thank you, Josh. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item C, resolution appointing Mark Shelley to the Sedgwick County Kechai Township Board as clerk.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. This item is a resolution appointing Mark Shelley to the Sedgwick County Kechai Township Board as clerk. Just for some background, there's passing of a former township board clerk, Keith Newcomer. State law vests the Board of County Commissioners with the authority to appoint replacements in those situations. The resolution that's in front of you has been recommended by both the Chairman and Commissioner Meitzner, as this township is in their respective districts. The resolution would be for the remainder of the term that Mr. Newcomer was serving would end on January 10th of 2027. The resolution's in order, and the recommended action is to adopt it.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate, there's only, there's only a few townships that cross into, into joint Commissioners' territories, and I happen to have a couple. I've worked with, like Commissioner Howell on a previous appointment. That was good. And so I got to work with Chairman, and we actually engaged the mayor of Kechai to, and just did some, some good thorough vetting, so to speak, and was highly recommended that this happened. So thank you, Chairman, for, for your availability, and I'll make a motion to, when the time's right, or I'll make a motion right now that we approve Mark Shelley to this township board.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And Kelly Arnold is here to swear in Mr. Shelley, who's also here. And I'll just say, Mark, we appreciate your willingness to serve. For those that, the township system is something that is very pronounced here in Sedgwick County, and they do a lot of work on the rural roads, ditches. So having good people that are serving in these roles as trustees and clerks, it's very, very important to the overall road system in, in the unincorporated parts of our county. So your willingness to step up, sir, we greatly appreciate that. So thank you.
All right. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Kechai Township Board Clerk to help me guide. Thank you. Congratulations. If you'd like to say anything.
Willing to serve.
Simple and profound. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, resolution appointing Christopher Egbert to the Sedgwick County Advisory Board of On-Site Wastewater System Installation and Maintenance and Sanitary Services.
Okay, Justin.
Thank you, Chairman. And if it's okay with you, Chairman, I suggest we could take Items D, E, and F together. They all involve the same advisory board. Just for explanation purposes, both Item D and Item E are resolutions appointing members. Item E in particular is FM Abrams to the hauler pumper position. Item D, which the Madam Clerk read, is the Christopher Egbert to the general public position on the same board. And then Item F involves five separate reappointments to this board. The, give me just one second. I didn't want to mention Mr. Egbert would be in the general public position. FM Abrams would be the hauler pumper position. And then the five reappointments, Mr. Dan Newfarmer would be the onsite wastewater system installer position. Tim Lubers would be the onsite wastewater system installer position, another one of those. And then a third position for onsite wastewater system installer would be Chad Mills. Randy Worthes would be for the sanitary services pumper position, and Austin Gottlob would be the professional engineer position. It is worth noting, this advisory board, I didn't mention their purpose, but they advise the Board of County Commissioners and the Director of the MABCD on matters and policy, matters of policy and procedure regarding the onsite wastewater system installation and maintenance and sanitary service. All four of the, or I'm sorry, all seven of these appointments would be four-year terms that would expire on April 9th of 2028. The resolutions are in order, and the recommended action is to adopt them.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. Any questions or comments on these appointments and reappointments? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve all the individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Advisory Board for On-Site Wastewater System Installation and Maintenance and Sanitary Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you all for serving in these roles. Next item, please.
Item G, resolutions reappointing five specialized positions to the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Appeals and Plumbers and Gas Fitters.
Okay, Justin.
Thank you, Chairman. As the Madam Clerk read, all five of these are reappointments to what's commonly called the plumbing board. And more specifically, the plumbing board advises the, they take part in technical code review and recommendations to both the Board of County Commissioners and the City Council on matters involving plumbing codes, plumbing installations, construction, and remodeling, and also handle some contractor licensing matters as well. The five individuals on this agenda item include Michael Evan Lees for the Board of County Commissioners, appointed as a master plumber in residential construction, Beau Means for the master plumber in service and repair, Seth Harrington for the journeyman plumber position, Sean Conway as a mechanical engineer position, and then Larry Darty as a public at-large position. As noted, again, these are all reappointments. The resolutions are in order, and the recommended action is to adopt them.
Okay. Very important board here for MABCD. Any questions or comments on these reappointments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the reappointments of the five individuals to the Board of Appeals of Plumbers and Gas Fitters, or MABCD.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business. Item H, consideration of a grant memorandum of understanding in the amount of $217,351 annually from the Office of National Drug Control Policy for Midwest High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Special Assistant United States Attorney Initiative.
Oh, there you go. Good job, Clerk. Erin, good morning.
Good morning, sir. Thank you for this opportunity. For those that don't know, I'm Mark Bennett, Deputy District Attorney, handles administrative matters and things like that, so I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. We are asking for the board to approve this grant MOU to add two staffing, two attorney positions to our staffing table and then other things set forth in the recommended action. What this is, is essentially, it creates a pass-through funding opportunity for the US Attorney's Office in Kansas to add two prosecutors to focus on drug interdiction, weapons, and other, you know, these types of prosecutions that can straddles both state prosecution and federal prosecution. They have the ability through the federal side sometimes to get more significant consequences to the offender, can have more law enforcement resources to ferret out larger operations, things like fentanyl, things that are grave concern to this community and statewide. They have some extra tools to help in that, but they need dedicated prosecutors to do it. They have some limitations on their ability to add prosecutors, and these positions give them that opportunity, the benefit to us. And you will note, if you've read through the grant, these positions would not be located in Sedgwick County, which is a little odd to be adding positions to our office not to be housed here. And I'll get to that reason for that in a second, but they will be in northeast Kansas, providing opportunities for prosecutions statewide. Because the US Attorney's Office, if you don't know, can locate people in Topeka or Kansas City, Kansas, but still prosecute offenders anywhere in the state. Now, the reason we're locating them there is, as Mark has shared with, with the manager and others, we have some open positions ourselves, and we don't want to create competition for our own open positions. And so we appreciate the US Attorney's Office cooperation in, you know, and how we've kind of balanced this. One important thing, you know, from a financial aspect, is that these positions are entirely contingent upon this grant funding be available. If at some point that grant funding were to no longer be available, we would either look to add these people to existing positions, you know, prior existing staffing positions, or unfortunately, we might have to just let them go. But we are not looking to add these two staffing positions apart from the grant funding that this MOU and other arrangements would make available. So that's my attempt to quickly summarize this. I would note that Erin Smith, who oversees the Criminal Division for the US Attorney's Office, is present. He's actually a former member of our office. We went to law school together. But, but I just note his presence is in support of this. If you have any questions about this, obviously, I stand to answer those, and I'm sure Erin offline could provide some context as well.
Very good. Appreciate. That's a great summary of what this is. Is this the first time this grant's been offered?
Well, it's not the first time it's been offered. The grant itself, in some version, has been around for years. I think it's actually how Erin got his start at the US Attorney's Office. But in the past, it was, they need to have a state partner. In the past, or most recently, the state partner was the AG's office. For a variety of reasons, they're looking for a new state prosecutor partner, and so that's why they've come to us. I think they've had some other partners over the years, but this has been, the grant itself in some version, I think, has been around for, I don't know, more than a couple decades, I think. Yeah.
Very good. Well, Erin, you did a great job explaining that. I think this grant for $217,351, the use, the need is all there, so I will happily support it. Any questions or comments on this grant? Okay, that means you did a good job.
I appreciate that very much.
So seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the grant MOU for $217,351.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thanks, sir.
Thank you all. Take care.
Next item, please.
Item I, consideration of two grant agreements from the Kansas Department of Corrections for the Sedgwick County Department of Corrections, $5,797,607 for the Sedgwick County Department of Corrections Adult Programs, and $4,247,843 for the Sedgwick County Department of Corrections Juvenile Comprehensive Plan Grant.
Okay, very good. Steve, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Beatty and Commissioners. I'm Steve Stonehouse with the Sedgwick County Department of Corrections. I'm here this morning seeking approval to apply for two grants from the Kansas Department of Corrections. Annually, the KDOC releases planning allocations for juvenile districts to utilize when preparing a comprehensive plan to address community corrections and juvenile justice services in Kansas. Allocations for state fiscal year represent, this state fiscal year, excuse me, the next state fiscal year, represent flat funding from KDOC for adult and juvenile services. Sedgwick County has received funding from the state for local juvenile justice programs. from the state for local juvenile justice programming since 1998. The state fiscal year '25 planning allocation is $4,247,843, which, like I said, reflects flat funding from the current year. This funding request is to provide a continuation of existing services for juvenile offenders at Juvenile Field Services and the Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center. The funding will also continue delinquency prevention programming with Rise Up Free Youth and legal representation services for juvenile offenders in the juvenile detention facility. Sedgwick County has received grant funds from KDOC for community corrections since the 1980s. Today, the Sedgwick County Department of Corrections supervises an average daily population of over 1,100 adult offenders. These clients have been convicted of a felony offense and have been given an opportunity to complete probation in lieu of a prison term. In Sedgwick County, community corrections consist of intensive supervised probation, the Adult Residential Center, and behavioral health services. Our planning allocation for adult services is $5,619,759.86. Our request is for $5,797,607. The funding request is $1,847,14, $177,847.14, more than our planning request, because we're able to request additional funding above our planning allocation for behavioral health services. As you know, substance abuse and mental health services are a great need in this population. So we are able to request the amount that we think we need to make that program operate, even though it's not guaranteed that we receive that. I'm requesting authorization for the chair to sign the juvenile services application, and if awarded, accept the grant and establish budget authority subject to technical adjustments in the amount of $4,247,843. And I'm also requesting authorization for the chair to sign the adult services application, and if awarded, accept the grant and establish budget authority subject to technical adjustments for $5,797,607. I'm happy, I would be happy to answer any questions without numbers. Thank you.
Okay, very good, Steve. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And Steve, thank you for being here today. I know this was originally on consent agenda. When we had agenda review on Friday, we decided to move it up to new business, because, especially on the juvenile side, that's been flat funded, and it doesn't meet our needs. So the requirement comes from the state telling us we have to provide these services, but they're not providing the amount of funding that we need in order to provide those services. So as a result, it comes out of our general funds, out of taxpayers, local taxpayers' money in order to provide these. So I wanted to make sure that we let the public understand that we are doing these. They're extremely important functions for us to perform. But we also need the funding when there's a mandate that comes down from the state in order for us to perform these functions. So that's why I ask if we'd move it up to the actual meeting, so that we could talk about that and let the public know how important these programs are. And they are mandated. And we definitely want to perform them, but we'd like to have reimbursement in order to be able to fully fund them rather than using local taxpayer money. But thanks for letting me explain that at the meeting today. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. And if I could just add on a little bit to that, Commissioner Dennis, I just think it's really important, as we're starting to have these conversations about budget going into next year, and we all know it's going to be a really challenging year. And we've had the conversation repeatedly about our reliance on property tax dollars and how much it has spiked, given all these changes that happen at the state. And so anytime something like this comes up going forward, I'd love to make sure that it's on new business, just so we can have the discussion. I think when we really start getting into the budget, we're going to start talking about all these examples. But if we can point them out as we go, I think it makes it more impactful for people. It'll be more of a theme, like, this is, this is another example. This is another example. This is a great example that we are mandated to run these services. The cost of running these services has increased quite a bit over the last handful of years, but the funding has stayed flat. So for us to be able to shore that up, we have to use property tax dollars to do that. And so I think it's just a really good thing that we should start pulling these for consent every time, and just make sure that we have this discussion publicly. So everybody realizes, well, this is, like I said, just another example. And hopefully, when we look at our legislative platform for next year, we can really focus in on some of these key areas and hopefully get some reimbursement back. So we're talking about all kinds of things to help with this property tax issues. And this is just an example of something we could do. So I appreciate you letting me speak to that, and I'm glad that this got pulled. So thank you so much for sharing.
Very good. Steve, there's two grants here under consideration, one for adult program and the other for juvenile. These are not covering the total cost of your programming for adults and...
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. The, we have several grants. We use offender fees and reimbursements, and then the county picks up a substantial portion for support for these services.
And that's the summary of what Commissioner Dennis and Lopez have said, is we're having to meet that gap considerably. And that gap is growing year by year because of flat budgets from the state.
Right. Flat budgets, and the commission did help with our staffing situation by raising wages, which doesn't always keep up with our allotment from the state. So you're absolutely correct.
Okay. Well, I just want you to know how much we appreciate you. I know Mario's here from juvenile. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you guys do. The corrections programming, adult and juvenile, is incredibly crucial to this community. So we appreciate all you do. I'm going to read, I want to make sure I get everything encompassed into this motion, so that you don't have to come back. There are two grants, and we're in discussion. So I want to make a motion that we approve the submission of the two grant applications and authorize the following actions: acceptance of the grants if they're awarded, the authorization for the chairman to sign the necessary documents, and the authorization to establish budget authority until the conclusion of the grant terms, and allow for remaining balance at the end of each calendar year to be established in the next fiscal year. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a second. Before we take a vote, Steve?
I would also ask for a establish of a contract with, a continuation contract with Rise Up Free Use for mentoring programs and the juvenile services.
Okay. Okay.
Chairman, I think you could just say you're incorporating that in your motion. The second would agree to that. That would be sufficient.
Good, because we didn't, yeah. I want to incorporate what Steve just said into my motion.
Second.
In a second. Does that suffice? Very good. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you again, Steve. Appreciate all that you guys do. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item J, consideration of a policy for reinvestment housing incentive districts.
Okay, great. We have Brent Shelton coming, the man, the myth, the legend. Let Brent share a little bit. We might take some questions and comments. And we have two public comments here that we'd also like to include here on item J. So Brent, take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Beatty. Commissioners, for the record, Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. This next agenda item was originally presented to you on March 20th. Commission voted to defer that until, for three weeks, until today's meeting. And so the item is the consideration of a policy for the reinvestment housing incentive district. Now, this became applicable to Sedgwick County, when formerly known as the Rural Housing Incentive District, was changed by state statute made effective July of 2023, to basically allow the cities in Sedgwick County, as well as qualified census tracts, to be able to participate in this program. Now, we've had some discussions about some of the challenges that we see with the statute as it currently exists. I think we've agreed that we would like to work toward including this in our legislative agenda for next year to clean up some of these concerns. We've had conversations with cities across the county that also have some concerns. So as we move forward to this, in the meantime, we have some cities that are considering the development of our HIDs. And so we want to be able to communicate commission concerns and commission preferences as we move forward. The purpose, as stated in statute, is basically to provide another economic development tool to the toolkits that are available to cities and counties, by encouraging housing development or renovation that would spur economic development growth, by allowing cities and counties the ability to participate in another method of the public improvements that would encourage that housing. An R H I D works in basically the same manner as tax increment financing. If an R H I D was to be approved, in the year in which that is approved, the existing tax base for all taxing subdivisions would be frozen at that current level for the duration of the rural, or the reinvestment housing incentive district. As development occurs, assessed valuation goes up, property taxes are levied on an entire assessed valuation. But taxes that are levied for city, county, school, and other taxing subdivisions are diverted into, or distributed into, an R H I D fund that would be then used to pay for certain eligible or statutorily defined infrastructure costs. This lasts until those costs have been paid, or until 25 years has lapsed, whichever comes sooner, and then that new tax base is available to all the taxing subdivisions. Now, inherent in the statute and embedded in the county proposed policy are some findings that a city needs to make in order to pursue R H I D. Basically, that there is a shortage of quality housing within that community that is expected to persist unless there is public incentive to correct that issue. Also, that that shortage of housing is a substantial deterrent to future economic growth in the city, and that the future economic well-being of the city depends on the governing body providing those additional incentives for either new housing or renovating existing. We went over the process the last time this was presented. So basically, there are two parts of the process to remind you of. One is that an ordinance would be passed by a city, authorizing the establishment of an R H I D. Within 30 days of the adoption of that ordinance, the county or a school district within which that R H I D sits would have the ability to nullify the creation of that district, if that county or school district determined it would have adverse effect on them. Now, adverse effect is not defined in statute. So what we're trying to do with county policy is just communicate B O C C preferences or priorities, as you would look at potential R H IDs. The policy's not designed to micromanage housing projects within cities, but to establish a pretty high bar before the county participates in deferring public funds to an R H I D. We're going to require that proof of that incentive is necessary, and that if deployed, it makes fiscal sense in the use of that R H I D incremental revenue. So it's primarily a communication tool to allow cities to know on the front end the things that the county wants to consider. Now, if we look at the policy, I want to take it in three parts. One is to look at the focus of what the county would consider in terms of their findings and of preferences that have been communicated. First of all, we go back to those original findings that are embedded in the Commerce Department's Housing Needs Analysis requirements. It's also stated in county policy. Is there a housing shortage that is going to persist without incentives? Is it deterring substantial economic growth? And is the city's future well-being dependent upon that R H I D? Second, you have indicated some preferences for infill projects versus suburban sprawl. We're trying to let the market correct problems where they can, and if it can't, this might be an applicable tool. Looking for some level of affordability, are we, is the R H I D providing housing that otherwise isn't attainable to certain segments of the population? Pay-as-you-go financing versus the city issuing debt would require the developer to pay upfront for those infrastructure costs versus having the city issue debt, and then using the R H I D incremental taxes to pay for those bonds. Because of the time limit of up to 25 years, there's a preference that we would be able to limit the amount of incremental revenues that go to support an R H I D, or maybe a limitation on the amount of time that would be, that it would be in existence. And so that we can partner with the communities, the 19 smaller cities in the city of Wichita. Early communication is one of the policy statements that is expressed in the policy. In terms of clarifying some of the things that the county would look at in determining adverse effect, because an R H I D works much like a TIF, we've pulled from some of the 30 years of the experience that have been used in the county in terms of administering tax increment financing, tried to employ some lessons learned there, and then make it applicable specifically to housing. So to hit the highlights of these adverse effect findings, first of all, if we're going to see an increase in particularly public safety types of public services, is this going to hinder that, that public service delivery? Because we've got additional rooftops without additional revenue going to support that. If the project is feasible without R H I D, there's no reason for us to move forward and publicly support it. It's the classic but-for. If this will happen anyway, we don't need to divert public funds to it. We want to make sure that the developer has enough skin in the game, that they're experienced, that they've demonstrated fiscal responsibility in terms of having some successful developments under their belt. So we want to make sure that there is enough private equity versus the public equity. We would look to make sure that because we're deferring tax revenue, that those public costs are outweighed by the public benefits of providing this housing. Will this housing spur some additional economic growth that creates jobs? Because of the way the statute is written, I think it would be in the county, well as the city, as well as any developer's best interest, to assure that the district plan and the district and the plan boundaries are contiguous. If there are no defined limitations on the term or the amount of incentive, that could be a finding of adverse effect, because it would be too open-ended. We want to have sufficient data to review, and make sure that if the R H I D overlaps with other public incentives, that those aren't inherently incompatible. For instance, a tax, if we have a tax exemption, you're not going to see incremental tax revenues. Those two would be competing incentives. Nothing would preclude the stacking of compatible incentives, if that's what was necessary to make an R H I D work. And then we want to be very judicious in terms of not creating equity issues favoring one developer over another developer, putting existing homeowners at an unfair disadvantage if they were trying to sell their home because of a competing sale in an R H I D district that would maybe not have special assessments. So we just want to be aware that we don't create those types of issues and create a situation where we've got a R H I D in place, now the next one has to have an R H I D in order to be competitive. So my recommendation at this time is that you approve the reinvestment housing incentive district policy by adopting the resolution and authorizing the appropriate signatures. I am available now for any questions or discussions for clarity about the proposed policy.
Okay. Thank you, Brent, for that. And thank you and your team. Valerie's up there for all the work that you guys have done on this. And a lot of discussion, a lot of discussion and a lot of conversation throughout the state, reaching out to partners throughout the state. So any questions specifically for Brent or this, this presentation?
I guess so.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez.
I just want to point out, as we're starting, have public come up and speak and everything, that today we're discussing the policy and not any particular projects, and that will be coming. But this is a more generic conversation in total, and not just one or two that are already in the works. So, thank you.
Good. Very important. Okay, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent, thank you for...
Brent, thank you for, for the presentation because I think you have been knee-deep in the policy document itself, and you summarized the bullets very succinctly, and the details are in the, in the policy itself. I think it's important, recall, I think that originally we, as the commission, thought that we could help, we could receive an application and maybe carve out some items or encourage some other items to be changed or this or that. But we, from our last discussion, we found out that under the current state law, we can either approve or not approve, correct?
That is correct.
So we can't really carve. And so this policy is really a policy of direction that the county feels at this time that you will be able to share with the various cities or the census tracts that are being applied for. You'll be able to share these guidelines that the county prefers so a city or a census tract in that city can work with the developer and say, this is likely to be approved by the commission if you, along guidelines, along these guidelines. Or if not in these guidelines, you may have, may have some issues. Am I succinctly saying that correctly?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks for letting me, for the record, so to speak, summarize that. Thank you.
Very good. Brent, hang tight if you can.
Will do.
And we'll get into public comments on item J. Do five minutes, just name an address. Kind of clerk will let us know and keep the track, and then we'll keep an ongoing discussion of these things. So, first up, Craig Crossit.
Honorable Chairman Beatty, County Commission, thanks for the opportunity this morning. Craig Crossit, 924 Cloverleaf, Goddard, Kansas. Just want to couch my comments first by thanking the county staff for their work on this item. I know it's taken a lot of time, and my comments that I'm going to provide, they're not to, not meant to be critical. We have some professional disagreements with some of the contents of the policy. However, we understand that as they're putting this together, they're doing what they've been instructed to do. So we appreciate the way they've interacted with us and received feedback from the different cities and stakeholders in regard to this issue. So overall, we have some concerns that the policy is too comprehensive, ambiguous, and it essentially is a signal that we do not want R H I D. And here are the many different ways that we could say no from a county level. There's some fear that we're taking a problems-oriented approach as we look at this incredible opportunity to address a major housing shortage in our communities. This housing shortage is made, attaining a new home here in Cedro County nearly unaffordable for our hard-working, blue-collar folks, our teachers, our nurses, police officers, and others. I think the major concern that we've heard has been about the money and how if we build all of these houses without tax revenue, we won't have enough money to provide public services. I think this is a warped view, and I don't believe it's steeped in facts. I asked that you'd take a look at the positives. It was stated a few weeks ago that the county would lose millions of dollars in revenue if this program were allowed because there would be so many applications. For that to be true, it'd also mean that we would have thousands of new places for families to live at an attainable cost in our communities. Perhaps we start with the one-page policy and let a, let a couple thousand new places for families to live be built, and then we put some more guardrails on it if necessary. We already have a thorough state statute with stringent requirements in order for a project to qualify, so maybe our county-level policy would refer to the state statute, all of those requirements. I mean, there's several steps, feasibility study, a housing needs analysis. We've gone above and beyond and provide cost-benefit analysis. I think that the county could start with the state statute, and then if it wanted to add two or three additional requirements, that would be great. But this multi-page policy, again, it's just signaling, here's a stop sign, we're looking for all the ways to tell you, no, we don't like R H I D. You know, keep in mind, if it, if it really is about the money, there is no money without these R H I D projects. The land where these projects will be built is currently generating nothing in value to the county. Added residential development would stimulate commercial and industrial development and the property tax revenue associated with those. You know, oftentimes, we're hearing this program compared to TIF, but I agree, there are similarities, but the financial impact for R H I D is much lesser in that residential property is assessed at half the rate compared to the commercial and industrial projects that we see in TIF. So I think that's kind of lost in that conversation when we're doing that comparison. In regard to the policy itself, we had some opportunity to provide feedback to county staff. Again, much appreciated. We provided some comments earlier this week, looking at policy statement, section three, this predisposed to support urban infill efforts over suburban sprawl. We, this is probably our biggest issue. We think it's discriminatory towards the other cities in Cedro County exclusive of the metro. You know, we're a suburb, so obviously, that's not going to work out too well for us if this is predisposed to urban infill. There are 20 cities in Cedro County, not just one. We would prefer the statement say that the county would review each request on a case-by-case basis in light of the ability to provide county service in the specific community. I think that addresses the issue. Further down in four, underneath the policy statement, communicating to the county as early as possible. Think that that's a great idea. We would suggest that the county requires submitting a preliminary concept plan somewhere in the first one or two steps. That way, we can get the county blessing, perhaps via a resolution. That way, we're not at the 11th hour after thousands of dollars have not already been invested in legal fees, planning, staff time, et cetera. Looking at adverse effects, we need to make sure we're quantifying this and it's not ambiguous and subjective on potential loss or tax revenue. On this one, it feels like this is a point Cedro County could raise for any project. We suggest a more quantitative system, such as the cost-benefit analysis that Wichita State can do. R H I D overlapping with other economic development incentives. We don't like the wording inherently incompatible arrangement. That seems ambiguous. I think if this is the intent, we could foresee cities in the county with housing needs opting for TIF, IRBs, and/or special assessments instead of R H I D. Since my time is expiring, I would just say, there's a couple of other items in there that are going to be really difficult to quantify, and I think depending on who looks at it, they're going to have a different interpretation. So let's, let's try to stick to quantitative analysis and some things that we could really look at as proof in the pudding when we're looking at that adverse effect. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Craig. A few questions. Commissioner Ha.
Mr. Chairman, I just think that his testimony is important enough. I would prefer to give him a few more minutes of time to testify before us because I need to hear what he has to say.
Yeah.
If I need to make a motion, I'd be glad to do so.
I don't think you need to make a motion. I think-
I'd give him some, some time if that's okay.
Craig, if you got other thoughts you'd like to share, you're welcome to share.
I got one or two other things. I think any part of this policy concerning the well-being of a city, such as discussions about city-issued bonds versus pay-as-you-go financing, respectfully, I don't think that that's in the county's lane to worry about. I think that's for the cities to worry about. You know, whether we're issuing bonds versus pay-as-you-go financing, that's a local impact at the city level. It's not going to have any mitigating impact on the county, in our opinion. There's also, we're all kind of interpreting the state statute a little differently at some, at some points of this conversation. I want to correct, it's, it's not approve or not approve, it's either do nothing or veto. I think that that's really important to distinguish that. So I think that's probably all I want to share at this time. We, like the county staff, have had lots of conversations and thought and doing all that we can to continue to, to look at this policy because it is important to us and the communities in Cedro County. I think we have an amazing opportunity to really address housing needs here with this, and so I want to make sure we don't miss the buck and we get it right.
Very good. Appreciate your insight and feedback. Okay. Questions or comments for Craig? Okay. I think we're going to hold off here towards the end. So, next up, Mayor George Lee.
Good morning, Chairman Beatty. Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to share. Craig, I think did a really good job in terms of highlighting our concerns, and I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things on the, in section three, when it talks about the, the difference between, you know, preferring urban infill versus suburban sprawl. We were kind of in a discussion about that. Is Goddard considered, since we're separate, are we urban? I mean, we have our own little urban city, or are we part of the suburban sprawl? I think that, that creates a two-tiered system. It creates the appearance. I mean, there's sometimes policies are written, and you could reread this as, we prefer to have these projects built in the city of Wichita and not so much concerned about the other 19 cities. It creates that impression because you're making some real, a difference based on where they are located within the community. The other thing I think I mentioned last time when I was here, that I'd like to see some type of reference to cost-benefit analysis and have that be in the policy. You know, when you read the policy, it'd be nice to be able to say, you know, if we hit A, B, C, and D, then we've probably got a really good chance of this going through. It's really hard to look at this the way it's drawn up at this point in time and to be able to say, we've hit, we've hit all the things and have some confidence. So I think maybe some additional clarity would also be helpful. So in terms of knowing how difficult it is to write policy and in my, my time in terms of working as an examiner and a banker, I've spent a lot of time reviewing policies, and I just think in general, this is way too vague. Could use more specifics, be shorter, be more concise. But I know it's, it's, it's a, it's a tough lift, and there's a lot of work that's being done, but I think we all have the same intent in mind, is to provide affordable housing in all of our communities, including Wichita, and try to make, you know, the county and our cities better places to live.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. We'll bring this to the bench. Any questions or discussion of the thoughts you'd like to share? Okay, Commissioner Ha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I still have a few questions on the mechanics of this. And let me start off by, I see we have Mr. Henry in the audience. I have one question on the law. I'm reading the Kansas statutes annotated on K S A 125244 subsection B, subsection B, and it talks about a limit of 50 units within such district associated with a single project. And it does talk about, there's some qualifiers, qualifiers that says for rent units within one year. So what I'm wondering is, if it's one project, but it's spread over several years, is that, how does that get around this 50-unit limitation?
How does, how does what get around?
Well, it seems, I mean, the law has a, embedded in the law is a limit for any one project to be to 50 units.
Okay.
In other words, the district could be 100 units. Any one project is limited to 50 units.
Okay.
That reads to me.
Okay. So, Tom Henry, Assistant County Counselor. So just to clarify a couple of things. So this particular statute is limited in scope. It only applies to the definition of city where it's a city of greater than 60,000 in population. But as far as how that limitation would work is, you could have a plan that encompassed multiple years, and you could only add 50 units per year as part of that plan.
So that brings the question in, if we approve a project, are we approving 100 units, or should I say however many units, 50 units per year forever? Or is it limited to, I mean, what's, what's the way to end that? I mean, so you say 50 units this year, 50 units next year, 50 units the year after that, for however many years they want to go on within that district? Is it, what stops that, 50 units per year?
It's the plan itself. The plan is going to have to define what the end goal is for it. Are we building 200 units? Are we going to keep this open as long as we can? That's going to come from the city or whatever governing body is implementing the R H I D. And I think that's a reason to support, support the idea in our policy of there needs to be some sort of limitation on the timeframe or on the dollar amount for the R H I D.
So in this case, if there's more than 100 units being built, it would take them at least three years to construct those units to fit this law?
Yes, yes. If, if they were subject to this limitation, they, they would only be able to do 50 a year. So to get to anywhere above 100, they would have to do at least three years.
Okay. I think that's new information. I don't think I knew that before, just now. So that, I don't think our policy references that, that point in any, in any way, does it not? I mean, do we have any type of reference to the statute or some type of embedded limit in our policy proposal?
Not, not anything specifically. It's more of a preference towards, you know, a limit on the timeframe and or the dollar amount.
Just to be transparent, I hope that our developers that are considering applying for this type of incentive would understand that limit because I would say, if I was building an apartment complex, I would not want to do it over three years. I would want to be in and, you know, get it done and be done. So to me, this is a change in scope of how that would have to be done to comply with that provision of the law.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for that answer. Counselor, do you agree with that so far?
I concur with what Tom indicated, yes.
Okay, all right. I would suggest, I know we haven't adopted this policy yet, but I wish there was at least a reference to this. Limitation must be, you know, in accordance with K S A 12-5244A and subsections there too, or something like that. There should be some type of a reference to this because it does change the scope on how this is going to be done. Do we need to, do we need to reference state law?
Chairman Justin White, our county counselor, all pine just to say, I mean, this act has, I think roughly 20 or 30 statutes in it. You know, the app, this policy is not indicating how you would apply for one of these, it's indicating the review process the county would go through in considering adverse effect. So it includes those types of conditions. I think any applicant that's going to go through this is likely to have legal counsel assisting them, that's going to be well aware of the statutory confines. I don't think we need to bring it up in our policy. There's no reason we can't include it. I get a little concerned about trying to do much more than referring folks to the statutes because some of these things could be subject to different interpretations from different private attorneys around the state in terms of what they can do in them. So I, again, it can be referenced. I, I don't think we're, I mean, but I also would caution against just trying to reference every statutory provision or the laundry list of them within this act just because that's usually not what we're doing in policy, but we can.
I think this is such bad language, I think it is subject to interpretation, and if we are going to interpret it for our policy, we ought at least ought to define what we think it means. Because I don't, I think this is very ambiguous personally, the way this is written. If I was a lawmaker, I would have demanded some clarity added to this sentence because I don't think it's clear. All right. Also, interestingly enough, Senate Bill 17 has a lot to do with tax credits. This policy has nothing to do with tax credits. Is that correct? We're not dealing with that issue in any way, shape, or form?
No.
Okay. So it's just the, just the property tax payment piece, okay. Is there anything in this policy that limits, limits how many years or how many dollars are allowed to be, fall under the R H I D before it would be sunset?
So the limitations in the statute are 20, the, from the start of the district, there is a 25-year limitation, but also if the project is completed before that 25-year window is up, then it would be concluded at that time. It doesn't just get to go on, and you don't get to collect that money if there's nothing to use it for.
So if I was, so if they say I extended my project out over a number of decades, I build a few units this year and a few units next year and do that for a long time, do those units that were built initially, are they still under that 25-year window that continues to be advanced forward until the last unit's built?
So the 25-year window starts with the beginning of the district. Any projects or anything that happen within that are all limited by that 25 years from the beginning of the district.
Is there anything that can be done by anyone to extend that 25 years?
You would have to create a whole new R H I D to do that.
All right. And so I understand the 25 years, but is there any other arbitrary limit that we could set in terms of dollars allowed to be, or we are diverting, if you will, property tax dollars from city, county, and school and other districts, if there are any. Again, not the state, not the state, not the state 19.5 mils, I guess it will be probably. But the other taxing jurisdictions, we'll be diverting those property tax dollars. So in a sense, the dollars are being paid by, by the occupants through their rents or through their, we levy taxes, taxes- or through their, we levy taxes, taxes to those properties. But rather than those tax dollars going to their respective jurisdictions, those monies are diverted to pay off government bonds. Is that correct?
Doesn't necessarily have to pay off government bonds, but used for infrastructure, any of the number of things enumerated in the statute for what it can be used for in the RHID. It doesn't have to be bond funding.
Do we have to, do we have to define what those dollars are designated for specifically? Or is it just?
Statute defines that.
I guess it can be land and it can be infrastructure. But do we have anything that says this RHID, we're going to pay for infrastructure only? Or does it, does it define what the dollars will be used for specifically?
Does our policy?
Does, is there any requirement for the applicant, under our policy, to, to clarify what the dollars will be used to provide funding to?
We have not limited it any further than the statute does.
So I guess my, my natural question is, once the infrastructure or, or land or whatever are, are made whole by the, by the, by the diversion of property tax dollars being paid by the owner or occupant, once those things are made whole, is there any way to limit the 25 years down to that point?
To the extent that the project is complete and there's no further money for, or no further projects for that money to be used for, it would be on the governing body that created it to, to shut that off. And at that point, any money that wasn't used for a project would be reimbursed to all of the taxing subdivisions.
All right. I may have a few other questions. I need to think for a minute. Let's see if my colleagues have questions. And if not, I might take back control of the, or ask for another, another chance to speak of. If my colleagues have nothing to say, then I'll probably ask a few more questions. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if your colleagues have anything else to say, questions or comments. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for all the work that's gone into this. I know it's been a tremendous amount. Our job as commissioners is to protect all of our taxpayers in every city, regardless of, you know, where they're living. And so with all due respect, this is completely our lane to have this discussion and to see what this could impact, not just one, not just Wichita, but everybody who lives within Cedric County. And I want to make sure that as we're having this discussion, we're bringing it back to this is, today is strictly about the policy. It's not about any individual project that's coming up. And all we're trying to do today is just get guidelines in place. So as Goddard or other cities have something that comes up, we can say, this is kind of what we're looking at. This is what we don't want to see. This is what we do, just so you're not wasting money, as you brought up. We don't want anybody wasting money in their approach and how they're trying to get this done. I absolutely believe there's a place for this. I think you're right, we're missing a lot of affordable housing. And with all of these big things coming, like the biomedical campus and all these things, that's going to be, it's going to get, continue to get worse. And so I think we should be looking at this. I think we should be looking at infill opportunities. I think we should be looking at affordability in housing and, and, you know, suburban sprawl we're seeing. I mean, go to Hayesville, go to Goddard, go to any of these cities, and you're seeing that happen. So I don't know if we need to approve potentially millions of dollars that's really going to be on the backs of our other taxpayers who are already feeling the burden of property taxes and what's that doing to their households. I don't know if it's right to approve things that are, that are already generally happening. So I'll leave it at that. But I do think it's our job to make sure that we are protecting all of our taxpayers. And, and so I think there's absolutely a place for this, but I don't think it's everywhere. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I agree, I believe that a policy is needed because we have to know what the rules are as move forward. A couple of comments. I did hear a comment that we wouldn't get any money without the development. But with the development, what we now have is to provide services from 911, EMS, the sheriff's department, comm care. Every other department in Sedgwick County are going to have to provide some services to all of those houses that aren't paying any taxes into Sedgwick County. That's a concern because it transfers that tax burden to provide all of the services that we provide over to everyone that's currently paying taxes today. So that, when we're looking at pressure on taxpayers currently, because they hate property tax, to transfer the, the tax burden to other people, I don't think is fair. I also heard a discussion about urban infill. I believe there is a place throughout the county for infill, whether you call it urban or suburban, I don't care what you call it. There's a place for infill throughout the county. The manager and I have a meeting coming up here in the near future with another city that is looking at that very thing. That's a much, much smaller city than, than the mayor spoke about. So the, there's some concern on both sides, and I understand that. I appreciate you all coming and speaking to us on this. I sincerely appreciate the work that staff has done on this. We need some kind of guidelines that people can come in and talk to us about potential projects and not at the last minute. We need to know about it upfront so we can work through this entire thing together as partners. But I support the policy because I think it is something that's needed. We'll, it is a policy, remember that. And three out of five commissioners can change a policy as it comes up to, to meet the needs of anyone that comes in and demonstrates a need that we agree with. So I, I am in favor of the policy today, and we'll continue to work with all 20 cities in Sedgwick County. Thank you.
Very good. Appreciate those thoughts. I'll just add a few things from my perspective. The first is that we, we will be addressing this with the legislature in some, some capacity. We tried to have that conversation last week and we're just too far down, down the road. I've been an advocate from the homelessness task force standpoint for a policy of sorts to take what they do in the, in the rural areas and to create a program for, for cities. So this is something that I've been talking about for a period of time. Is this exactly what I had hoped for? It's not. I, I think there's some things here that need to be shored up, but I, but we, we can't address that from the state side until next legislative session, and we, we plan to do that. There's a balance that has to be struck here. And I think we have to be very cognizant of the balance. Number one is, we, we do have a shortage of housing inventory, and there is just no way around that. In fact, we have enlisted PPMC, Wichita State PPMC, to give us a housing inventory study so that we can really have an idea of exactly what it is we're looking for, and not just the total number. You know, our county appraiser will tell you, he believes we're short 30,000. I've heard him use the number up to 50,000 housing units in Sedgwick County, which seems hard for me to believe, but he, he's using that number. And we know for a fact that we are, we're short on housing supply. So that, that study from PPMC is going to help us quantify that, and then we can qualify the impact. So the impact that we all know is, the supply-demand model is a little busted. When there's limited inventory and high demand, it increases the price of the product. And, and that's what we are seeing. We are seeing that happening in a big way, and that's creating the affordable housing challenges that we have. We have a lack of affordable housing in our community. And that's a broad spectrum and a broad scope. We have a lack of access to affordable housing. So that's why this balance is important. There's a need. There is a significant need for this. I also want to balance empowering the 20 cities of Sedgwick County. That's an important tenet of what I believe county government should be doing. So, but there are adverse effects to the county. There are. When you're doing housing units and bringing people into an abated zone, there will be public services that'll be there. Commissioner Dennis mentioned some of those services. I would also throw in fire, but there will be public services there that do come at a cost. And we have to be cognizant of that because that cost will be distributed out through the remainder of the county. The other thing that I think we haven't discussed is the competitive environment that it'll be creating. And I think that's important to know why a policy is needed on our side. I talked to one city manager in my district, District Four, who has 1,800 housing units under development right now, with I think six or seven more housing units in their, in their planning commission now. And he says, we don't need a program like this, but if this program starts going through the state, through the county, we will need to be doing things to remain competitive. So I don't think it is short-sighted to believe that we will see 15, 18, 20 RHID applications coming through Sedgwick County soon. So with that in mind, we do have to be cognizant of the impact of this. If we had 7% growth, and that's, that's incredibly aggressive, if we had 7% growth in this community, for people that are moving to this community or those that are aging, getting out of high school and becoming independent in their housing, and we, these units started taking, these districts started taking up these housing, these housing needs, we are simply displacing the property taxes to the rest of the community. That, that is a, that's a significant challenge. And, and I will just tell you, my mindset on incentives like this is, if the market can't do it, then we need to consider helping to meet this crisis. If the market can do it, we need to let the market do it. And I think those are conversations that are happening right now through these policies. So those are just some thoughts I have. I am in favor of an RHID policy. I do think there is a need for this community. I just think that it has to be used sparingly and it has to be used with a very narrow scope to attack exactly what the needs is. So just some thoughts on my end. Anybody else? Questions or comments?
Switches.
Your switch is him. Commissioner Howe.
All right. It was a trick. They want me to stop talking, apparently. I don't, I don't blame them, though. Hey, listen, so I have a few more questions. And with respect to one of our speakers this morning, I would like to ask a couple of questions to clarify some details. There was a, there was a concern about discrimination, where we would favor infill versus suburban sprawl, I think that was the word that was used. Is there any concern about that argument? In other words, do we think we are defensible to say that we would be more likely to approve an infill project versus one that's maybe on the outskirts of, of a, of one of our smaller cities, for example?
Tom Henry, Assistant County Counselor, again. So what the policy is doing is putting some information to the cities, you know, here's the things we're going to consider. But each of these is going to have to be considered on a case-by-case basis. We have to address each individual project and determine whether or not there's an adverse impact. And to the extent we think the adverse impact is significant enough, then the county can adopt a resolution to nullify any one RHID project. So we are not beholden to, and again, that's why we're using more language of preference for infill rather than, you know, this is all that we will do. That's not what we're saying with that.
So in statute, and I don't think in this policy, we don't define the word infill or the other terms that we're using, this, this phrase suburban sprawl is not defined anywhere that I can see.
Not within the policy, no.
Is there, is there a nominal or normal definition that we should refer to when we're talking about that type of thing? I mean, I don't know how you, I don't know how you define suburban sprawl versus infill. I, I know personally what I think they mean, but if I was going to judge a project, you know, application for a project, and I was going to weight that based on my own personal opinion, is there any way to objectify this, this concern a little bit?
I may defer to Brent on that one.
Commissioner Howe, for purposes of the preference over, from infill over the suburban sprawl, there is some language in the statute that refers to infill projects where infrastructure has been in place for a period of time, or where there are special assessments have been in place for a period of time. So I think that's the focus, is that those are the kinds of things that, there's a demonstration that the market has not been able to satisfy that need. And to the obverse, if you've got suburban sprawl, or you have, as Commissioner Beatty mentioned, 1,800 rooftops under construction, the market seems to be addressing that concern.
So, you know, in previous discussion in another, another year, going back a number of years, we talked about the impossibility legally of, of addressing what we would consider tiny homes. Because there's really no way in the law to say that this is a tiny home because it's so many square feet and this is just a regular house because it's more than that many square feet. We were cautioned, you know, legally, they're both, they're both, if they're both built with the same building codes, if you will, and they're both built in the same, same type of construction, then we look at them equally, even though one may be 450 square feet, one may be 2,500 square feet. So it's very difficult in the law to define, you know, one type of housing. I know this statute does have an average living space, not counting the garage and basement, I assume unfinished basement, of 1,650 square feet. And it seems to me this is geared towards what I would consider to be affordable housing, trying to address affordable housing needs in the community. I guess I would argue that if you, if your average house is 1,650 square feet, it may not be what I consider to be affordable housing. I think what I was, I would like to find what I would consider to be lower-income housing opportunities. The average house today being built is, you know, nearly $300,000 in Sedgwick County. So how, how are we going to find a way to build homes that are half that price? Well, if we had a size limitation other than what the law states, would that be legal or is that something we should not go into? If we say we wanted to say an average housing size of, say, 1,100 square feet, would that be something we could consider?
I would think for purposes of this policy, we're looking at the fiscal impacts to the county, and I would leave that up to the city that's going to propose an RHID and let them do that. I think that's something that we should stay out of.
Likewise, you know, we're talking about apartments versus a single-family homes, but this also includes things like multifamily homes, duplexes, quadruplexes, and other types of housing. Does this include also modular homes, manufactured homes, mobile homes?
I think, again, the policy is designed to look at the fiscal impacts to the county, not to micromanage what might work in one city and might not in another. So I think that's not part of the intent of this policy.
Yes, what I'm saying is, I'm not real happy with the state law. I'm, I'm actually not real happy with the policy either. I think there are some missed opportunities if we're going to try to, you know, figure out how to address the, what we see as the big problems in Sedgwick County. I think the, the issue of adverse effect also should be defined. I think that's something that one of the speakers said this morning. What is an adverse effect? I think we need to know what that means. I think also, let me stay here. This issue, it was argued, the pay-as-you-go versus bonded debt being in this policy. I guess to that question, why do we have an interest in that, in, and how it's done at the city level?
That was drawn from some experience that we have seen with tax increment finance districts that were financed with debt and where the incremental revenue from the TIF was used to support that debt. There have been shortfalls in the incremental revenue and a developer that wasn't, didn't have the sufficient capacity to make up that shortfall. So if the, it just speaks to more the responsibility and, and the private equity piece of, of that, that makes it a more solid deal, mitigates the public's risk in those developments.
Okay, just a couple more quick comments. There's a, there's a phrase that the, on the first page of our policies is, that we have to demonstrate that there's a shortage of quality housing within the city or county. That's an application they make to the state of Kansas, is that correct?
That is correct.
So they have to make the argument that there's a shortage of housing. I would say, once our housing shortage has been satisfied, they will no longer be able to do this, and the state would no longer approve those applications because it'd be harder to make that, make that case in the future, once the housing shortfall has been addressed essentially. So there's a potential natural limit in, under the RHID law that would stop this type of incentives. Am I saying that right?
I think that would be up to the interpretation of the Department of Commerce as they're looking at it.
Do we have any idea whether or not they have actually denied any applications at this point?
I'm not aware that they have.
Don't know. I think someone already said this a minute ago. I, I do believe that our interest ought to be, that there ought to be adequate affordable housing. That is my personal interest. And I agree with one of our commissioners that spoke. I think there is a place for this policy. But I think that, that if I was going to articulate my, my reasons for supporting a policy like this or this law at all, it'd be, would be trying to address the issue of affordable housing. But I'll say this, that one of the reasons our housing costs in Sedgwick County have gone up so much in the last few years, by the way, if you didn't hear this morning, there's been a huge spike in the, in the inflation rates for the first quarter, was announced this morning. And as a consequence, the markets, of course, are reacting, okay? If it was going to extrapolate that, we're looking at another 12% inflation rate for 2024, if that was to be extrapolated. I'm not sure that's going to continue, but let's just say it did. We, we, we had an average increase in housing costs last year of about 10% for those that had increase in value. I, I think that's going to continue. And one of the reasons we have a problem in Sedgwick County is because we have traditionally had under-market housing costs. We didn't really seem to have a shortage of housing, we do today for some reason. But having said that, supply and demand issues and, and labor, labor rates and, and cost of supplies have driven the costs up dramatically for new housing, which drives up the cost for existing housing. And, uh, so it's a very textbook, uh, problem, and the problem I don't see is going to get any better. But one of the ways to address this is by having, is by having more housing. And having more housing is the answer. I mean, as far as, if we can do something to cause more housing to happen, it'll actually address the issue of supply and demand on housing. To me, that is the only, probably the only dial we actually have in the county is to make sure there's more housing become available. So you talk about, you know, crazy property tax, uh, numbers on how, on housing going up, um, the, the lack of housing is, is one reason the cost of housing has gone up. So even if we don't get tax value from one of these projects, the fact is we can, we can throw some cool water, if you will, on the other housing that is providing, providing tax revenue, if those values don't go up as much, does that make any sense? It's still a, it's still a benefit to everyone in this, in this county. That is a very interesting, uh, perspective on this. Finally, I'll just say this, I, I, I would prefer to have a fair tax system that is, uh, doesn't have carve outs and doesn't have exceptions to what I consider to be a very flat policy. But, uh, Kansas is getting into, uh, all kinds of, uh, things where it creates special provisions and special, you know, opportunities for certain classes of people for all kinds of things. And I can, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. The, I think we're getting into that. Uh, I think other states have done that in the past. Kansas has always been very flat in their, in their property tax policies, but I think that's changing. So with that, I'll just say this, I, I probably support, um, RHID, uh, ideas and concept. I do think we need a policy, I'm not sure this policy is ready for adoption yet. I'm still not completely happy with everything that's in the policy. I think we need some definitions. Uh, I'm not so sure that it's exactly what I would want to see us adopt today, but. With that, Mr. Chairman, uh, thanks for the chance to speak.
Sure. Uh, Justin?
Yes. Uh, Chairman and Commissioners, I was going to make a couple of comments. Um, there've been question about the definition of, or how urban infill would be interpreted in the policy. Uh, I would envision that urban infill could occur in any of the 20 cities in Sedgwick County. I'll think it should be limited to the city of Wichita. Uh, the RHID statutes talk about development and renovation. Um, I think this is, I think Brent's comments indicated, uh, some of the thought process from a policy standpoint as to why that language would be in there. But I also wanted to point out that the policy does indicate, um, that the county would like folks who are interested in, in utilizing RHID incentives to contact Sedgwick County early in the process. I think any of those types of things could be ironed out, discussed by the parties, um, before things would get too far down the track. So I, and I'm not just speaking about the urban infill. I don't, I think any other, uh, concerns that, or questions that applicants or cities may have on these, I think that's part of the intent, the process and policy here. Um, but I just wanted to point that out because that opportunity would exist, and obviously Sedgwick County staffs have indicated a willingness to do that.
Okay. Good comments. Brent, thanks again. And again, this is a policy, but at, individual applications, we will look on, at a, on their own merit, on individual basis, correct?
Absolutely, sir. Everything will be considered on a case by case basis.
Last comment, and then I'm happy to make a motion unless someone else has other comments, but, uh, we need all housing levels. We need to increase the supply at all levels of housing in this community. The question at hand on RHID that I think the state's trying to address, that some of the cities are trying to address, is can the market develop what would be deemed affordable housing? Can the market do that? And if not, where is the role of government to offer incentive because of the need, the crisis need? And I think that's at the premise, that is it. That is the core principle that everyone is discussing right now. Um, can the market do this without incentive? So, and as we look at each individual application, that will be the, the, the leading premise that we build all of our arguments from. So, thanks for all your work. And Justin, your team, thanks for your work, so.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this policy? Okay, that being said, I will make a motion to approve the Sedgwick County policy for reinvestment housing incentive districts.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
No.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for those that came in to speak and to share their thoughts on this policy. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item K, en banc follow-up discussion regarding cultural arts park and rec merger remodel.
Yeah, Tom?
Uh, Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office. We had discussed this topic at yesterday's staff meeting, so I moved, or I would suggest we defer this.
Yeah. Um, so you want to, would you like to make a motion to defer, a motion to remove from the agenda? Just defer?
I, I think remove is the right word.
Then we'll bring it back. To remove?
Yeah.
Got, okay. All right, I'll make a motion to remove item K from today's agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, thank you. Uh, next item, please.
Item L, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on April 4th, 2024.
Okay, hello, good morning. You're not Joe Thomas.
No. I think I'm better looking.
You are, yes.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Lee Berry of Purchasing Department. The regular meeting of the Boards of Bids and Contracts of April 4th, 2024 resulted in one item that we are seeking your approval. Uh, item one, architectural and engineering services for juvenile services building project services, and the recommendation is to accept the proposal for the architectural and engineering services from Haney and Associates Architects. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of this item.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, well, I'll vote for this, uh, but what I've asked, uh, the manager and, uh, Tanya to do is to come up with a prioritized listing of what kind of buildings that we need immediately, what is the priority that we need to do this in? Is this our, really our number one priority that, uh, that we have currently? And, and I'm not convinced that this is our number one priority. Uh, and how does that fit in with empty buildings that we've got around, uh, the city right now? Uh, how does that fit in with some of the needs that we have for comm care? Uh, so, uh, I'll agree with this at this point in time, but I think that there are more higher priorities out there than this facility. Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments for Lee? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, thank you, Lee. Uh, Tom, it's okay with you, I want to pause for a second and convene the Fire District meeting. It's good with you? Okay. Um, so I'll call to, uh, order the meeting of Wednesday, April 10th, 2024, for the governing body of the Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present, next item.
Public agenda.
Are no items for public agenda, next item.
Appointments, item A, accept the resignation of Andrew Hall from the Sedgwick County Fire District One Steering Council.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, this item involves a resignation of Mr. Hall from the Sedgwick County Fire District One, Number One Steering Council. Uh, and just to explain, Mr. Hall was the appointment from the, uh, at-large aircraft manufacturing position on that advisory board. The recommended action is to accept his resignation.
Any questions or comments? Really appreciate, um, Andrew's service on this, uh, steering committee. We got work to do to replace that, um, that position for the aircraft manufacturing. We'll get to work. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Andrew Hall from the Sedgwick County Fire District One Steering Council.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, next item, please.
New business, item B, fiscal year 2023, staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant application.
Okay, we're going to talk about the SAFER Grant, and we'll wait for Chief Doug Williams. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Commissioners, Doug Williams, Fire Chief. We are wanting to apply again. We applied last year, you approved last year for us to apply for the SAFER Grant for the same nine positions. Um, we didn't, we weren't successful. We've worked hard at trying to figure out what we could do to write a better grant. We've worked with the, um, finance and, and, um, the grant writers in there to clean it up and hopefully do a better job. Our goal is to replace, to add nine flex staffer positions. What we call flex staffers are our, um, personnel that, that cover sick leave, vacations, um, injury leaves, and, and any type of leave that we have. Those, that's what those positions are used for, to maintain our daily staffing levels. Um, last year, we paid 30,000 hours of callback staffing above and beyond current, of what we had. Currently, we have three, we have nine total. We have three on each shift right now to cover all of our leaves, but that coverage is being shorted by 30,000 hours of callback staffing. So the goal of this is to cut down on that, um, callback staffing. We, we also, this will, the goal of this is to cut back our mandatory callback. One of the things that's very, um, very, a bad morale issue and very, um, concerning to our personnels when we require them to work 24 hours, a mandatory callback on weekends and holidays, and, and that is a big morale buster, and we're trying to find that level to where we can cut down on all of that mandatory callback and also, um, still not cost us extra money. Um, right now, a, a step one firefighter with all of his pay and benefits, it costs us $766 per shift. A callback step one firefighter with his time and a half plus his, um, payroll taxes and, and is $892. So it costs us almost $130 per day to call back staff one person versus have a full-time employee. So we, we think that this is going to be a, a wash, that we'll, um, break even on it, and, and this SAFER Grant will pay for three years, and that'll give us the time to evaluate, um, where that is. We don't want to add a whole bunch of flex staffers and then end up with days where we don't need them, that we have extra people, and then we lose money. But on the flip side, we want to offset our costs and, and provide, uh, where we no longer have to mandatory callback personnel. So that's our hope in this. And, and wherever we find that sweet spot at the end of three years, we can attrition out, whether we, whether it's nine or whether it's six, um, it, it's not hard for us to attrition out three personnel in a year between retirements and anybody that leaves and goes somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah, very good. Appreciate that description and summary of what you're working towards, Chief. Any questions or comments for Chief Williams? Yeah, Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, Chief, thank you, and I do appreciate your, uh, careful review of what, what is potentially in need. And I know, uh, in our meetings, could have maybe applied for one or two more, but it may, you're aware, you're conscious of over, overapplying, and, and I think this is a very, I was familiar with the SAFER Grant when I was at the city where we, where, uh, management tried to make sure that it was, like you've referenced, attrition and what is the real need versus what you maybe could apply for. You could apply for much, much more, uh, under the terms of the SAFER Grant program. So I, I, I respect and appreciate your due diligence and your, and you're sharing the 30,000 hour type stuff and doing the backwards math to get what, like you said, it, it'll be a, it'll be a little bit of a guess over the next three years, but you're aware of it. So I want to express my thank you.
Very good. Um, just for public clarity, a SAFER Grant, the acronym is Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, this is a FEMA grant, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, Chief, appreciate it. Best of luck on this application.
Okay, and I also want to add, we're, in our budget, um, decision packages, we're putting in for three personnel for next year, and if we're successful in the grant, then, um, we know we need three. I mean, we, we're pretty sure we need six, but, um, but in the, um, in the, in that, those three positions, if we would get the grant, would get rolled into the grant because they won't be approved till we find out we get the grant. So I think that fits into the criteria to, for those to be safer positions.
Very good, and appreciate finance for helping on the application, so. Okay, any other questions or comments for Chief? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the submission of the SAFER Grant application.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, thank you, Chief. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Anything under other for Fire District? Seeing none, next item.
Executive session.
Which we have none. So I'll adjourn the Fire District meeting and reconvene the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Hey, Tom?
Uh, Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stoles, again recommending approval of consent items M through Q this morning.
Okay, we've all went through these items. Uh, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve, to approve consent, agenda items M through Q.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Ms. Tanya Cole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I have just a few, um, updates regarding, uh, legislative items. So first adjournment, uh, occurred, uh, just this last Saturday around 3:00 AM on Saturday morning. Um, we know that the tax plan, uh, is going to the governor. Just a couple of points of interest that I wanted to point out, um, in there was to abolish the local ad valorem tax reduction fund and the county and city revenue sharing fund. Um, also was to reduce the uniform, uh, school finance levy from 20 mils to 19.5 mils beginning in tax year 2024. Um, also wanted to mention, uh, we worked on this fairly quickly and sent this to the legislature last Thursday, and that was, um, input on House Bill 2096, which was the government competition as well as, uh, kind of the gateway to the dark store theory. Uh, we found out, um, last week that the bill passed the Senate, however, um, the House sent it back to conference committee, um, obviously over the concerns on the government competition and the, the property tax appraisal changes. Um, but also within that bill was the Veterans Valor Property Tax Relief Act and the Homeowners' Property Tax Freeze Program. So they had several things kind of packaged in that bill, um, so this could come back up during the veto session. Senate Bill 28, which is the mega budget bill, um, we understand that there is 2.5 million in there for community corrections, uh, and then we also know that there is funding in there for, um, improving services for people with disabilities and those on the waitlist. Uh, we did hear that there is, um, excuse me, that expiration place, the sales tax exemption,[1607.83] We did hear that there is, excuse me, that expiration place, the sales tax exemption, that did get through. So good news for expiration place. Also, I did, I thought there was going to be movement on this, but there is not, and that is House Bill 2601. That is the third DUI in receiving multidisciplinary services. That, we did not get any movement on that in the final days. So not good news on that one. And then we just found out late yesterday from Kelly Arnold through Justin Wagner, that Senate Bill 410, in its title, it is designating a portion of a highway and kind of renaming that. However, within that bill, they put in some changes to the revenue neutral rate. And so it looks like it's just mostly impacting the clerk's office and the mailer. So just wanted to mention that. As far as dates, April 25th and April 26th, they will, the Kansas Legislature will come back. And those two dates, they will be discussing the omnibus bill. And then April 29th, which is the Monday, they will start on veto overrides and they will definitely conclude, my understanding is on April 30th. So those, that is it for my updates. Happy to answer any questions.
Tanya, you've done a great job.
Okay.
The staff done a great job on these things, trying to keep everybody up to date what's going on. Any questions or comments on legislative issues? Okay, it's winding down. Thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Any committee reports from the commission? Seeing none, next item.
Other.
Anything under other? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. You know, we all joined the members of Friends of McConnell, which is one of the large economic drivers in our community. And also it is a great place for men and women who are serving our nation. Last night, there was an event out at the Air Museum for the Eisenhower School for National Defense. And it was a great opportunity for us to meet both officers, civilians, and some foreign exchange officers from, that are attending that school, that are coming in to look at things that are happening, not only at McConnell, but throughout Sedgwick County. So they had an opportunity to learn more about the biomed facility, to learn more about NAR, to travel around looking at the air capital of the world. So it was a great opportunity to meet a lot of the future leaders of both the military and in our civilian life. So I wanted to let everyone know I did have an opportunity to participate in that last night. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Commissioner Meitzner?
Yes, thank you. Just a notice that I serve on the MSU Tech Board, and this afternoon at 4 o'clock, they're going to have a ribbon cutting for a, for the Gene Haas, H-A-A-S, Innovation Lab on the campus. The Gene Haas Foundation donated a million dollars to build this facility, which would be training for welding and manufacturing. And it's got an emphasis for, to reach underrepresented population and inspire future stuff. So that is at 4 o'clock. You all can come if you want to, obviously, but out of MSU Tech. So thank you. And again, thanks for letting me serve on this board.
Yeah, wonderful. Other, anything other under other? Oh, Commissioner Howe.
I just wanted to share, I hate missing things with Friends of McConnell. I appreciate Commissioner Dennis raising that up. I had a prior commitment, just want to let you people know, I absolutely loved my experience last night doing forensic speech and debate judging for Mulvane High School. And we actually had a statewide tournament here. And those kids are amazing. I don't know what they're going to do going forward, but I am incredibly impressed with their ability to make solid arguments and make presentations before people who they don't know. I know it's intimidating, but they do a tremendous job. So I wanted to share that, not that I wasn't caring about the Friends of McConnell, I really do, but I actually had a prior commitment to deal with these students. And I'm glad I got the chance to do that last night. Thank you so much.
Okay. I would just sum one thing up. I want to make a comment about one of the things that was discussed at the On Bonquet City of Wichita, and that was about retooling CJCC, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. And I got a message earlier that this time last year, in this community, we had seven homicides. We've had 16 so far in the community. It seems like once a week, we are getting messages of violent crime, the trends. I appreciate your comments and everyone's agreement, and Manager Stoltz, your leadership on wanting to retool that CJCC. I think this is a necessary conversation that has to happen about how we continue to reform some of these models and engage the community on some of the things that are really plaguing it right now. At the same conversation with USD 259 Superintendent Kelly Billfield, and I had a conversation with DCF Coordinator Dee Nyswanger about what we want to do here, and they are asking to be engaged as well. So this is a topic of conversation that needs leadership and needs coordination. And I think it's the appropriate time to retool that advisory board and make it what it is and what it needs to be to start having these conversations and moving some things forward. So this is important for this community. Yeah, Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I serve on CJCC, and I am a little bit disappointed, we have not been having meetings recently. I think a lot of the opinion perhaps, a lot of the purposes of CJCC have made incredible efficiencies in our community, and there doesn't seem to be as many opportunities that we're aware of right now. And I'm not saying there's maybe some things we haven't thought of. One of the things that I would like to do relevant to your comment, it's still early in 2024, and I think one of the things I'm lacking is, if you will, a spreadsheet that quantifies the details of data regarding some of these incidents that have happened that continue to make the news nearly every day. Let me give you an example. There was someone who was, lost their life under the Lincoln Street Bridge just a few days ago. So again, there's details we know right now, we can continue tracking that, and as we gather data to add to that case, so we can go back and read and say, here's what happened. A lot of these things, and I've heard someone say this before, if you're not doing drugs, if you're not out after midnight, if you're not involved in gang activity, if you're not having domestic violence within your own home, the risk of violent acts towards you is extremely low. And so I'd like to quantify, or I should say qualify those ideas by doing some analysis on exactly what is going on. I think we see a rise in our data that is very concerning. But if we could quantify that and say, this is a random act of violence, someone who was against someone else, we don't know who it was, or we don't know what the motivation was. To me, that would be very good to know those types of cases. But if you could quantify and say, this is, you know, a domestic dispute, this one is a, you know, drug-related or gang-related violence, I would like to be able to, if you will, do some analysis based on what do we actually know about these cases? It's easy to forget them. So we get anecdotal at the end of the year. I would much rather have some detailed analysis that's capturing that data as it comes to us. And so I don't know how to do that. I could do it myself, but I'm wondering if there's a way we could have some type of, you know, official initiative, if you will, to seek gathering that data so that we could have some analysis done by government versus just done by myself.
Good. Appreciate all the comments. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
Okay, we do have an executive session. Commissioner Lopez.
I move the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 11:18 to discuss personnel matters and non-elected personnel related to a management position, and that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 11:18.
Okay, I have a motion. I will second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we'll break. We'll see you back shortly.
It was great.